And thank you for coming out tonight. I'm calling this meeting to order at six P M. Roll call Ashton Fowler.
Here.
Tiffany Nick.
Here.
Nate Brewer.
Here.
Lee Perryman.
Here.
Laura. Invocation was provided by Fire Chief Nate Osgood prior to the work session. That was standard pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Report from Mayor Heil.
Thank you, Madam President. Dan, how you doing? First of all, I want to take this opportunity to introduce you to a young lady. She is Ms. Heart of Dixie. The name is Brianna Belser. I ask you please come forward. This is an extraordinary young lady and she has a program to take on a challenge that's going to be so much beneficial to our community. She has some, what she is doing, Feed the Need. And she will explain to you how she's handling this program. We can't thank this, when you meet people who's young people like this, our future is so much brighter. Dan, please.
Hello, everyone. I am Brianna Belser and I'm Ms. Heart of Dixie in twenty twenty four. My community service initiative is Feed the Need and it is a nonprofit organization. Today, I would love to read a proposal. About Feed the Need. Introducing Feed the Need, a nonprofit with a purpose. Our goal at Feed the Need is to offer crucial assistance to marginalized communities with a particular focus on those facing food insecurity, homelessness, and period poverty. We are proud to be a nonprofit organization with the mission to make a real difference in people's lives. Our organization is committed to making a meaningful difference in the lives of those we serve. We achieve this by collecting and distributing food, clothing, and hygiene products to those in need. We also provide virtual hygiene products to individuals who are unable to afford them as we believe it is a fundamental right for every person to have an access to these essential items. Our goal is to create a world where everyone has equal access to basic necessities, regardless of their socioeconomic status or background. By providing these essential items, we hope to empower individuals to focus on their personal growth and success rather than being worried about growth, rather than being worried about their basic needs. We believe that this approach will help to benefit the individuals we serve, foster the communities in which we operate. Feed the Need Donation Drive. In an effort to foster community engagement and address the needs of our lower-income population, I am proposing a citywide donation drive during the month of February. With your support, I hope to establish collection points in each district, collaborating with local businesses, schools, community centers, and religious institutions to maximize outreach. By encouraging the entire community to participate, we can make a substantial impact on addressing the pressing needs of those experiencing homelessness and hardships. Through this initiative, we not only aim to collect essential items, but also foster social integration and strengthen the bonds that make Silicaga a compassionate and caring community. Your endorsement of this proposal would greatly contribute to the success of this collective effort. My call to action. Seeking Silicaga City Council's endorsement and engagement. Join us in fostering community spirit by endorsing and actively promoting our upcoming donation drive. We invite council members to champion this cause within their districts, urging constituents to participate and make a positive impact on our community's well-being. Together, let's create a united front for change. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Let this young lady, tonight, with that our Christmas tree. Yeah, while we're talking about the Christmas tree, let me reiterate. Thank you. Thank you, Beutification Council. All the people that helped make Silicaga as beautiful as it is today. Beutification Council, Santa Program. Laura, thank you so much for what you've done for Dixie. Now, at this time, I'd like to ask of Tara, would you please join me? We have another presentation we would like to make on behalf of the Silicaga Beutification Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Tara Douglas. I'm the president of the Beutification Council. And each year, we do annual awards to honor someone who has done a lot for our community and has done a lot to keep our, our community a vibrant place to work and live and visit. And we're going to start the awards with the Citizen of the Year. So our Citizen of the Year, we proudly recognize individuals who perform outstanding service to the city and community through unselfish leadership deeds and giving that enhance our quality of life. And let me tell you a few things about our recipient of this award. So she started her career in Silicaga in nineteen seventy five at East Highland Middle School. And she was a home economics teacher there. And I was fortunate enough to have her as one of my teachers. She had a long and distinguished career there and touched many lives. She, even after retirement, has continued mentoring young people. And I would argue that she is mentoring old adults also because she is certainly my mentor. And she's helping everyone find success in life. She's worked directly with the community in so many ways. I have a whole list here of all the things that she's done. She's worked with the Chamber of Commerce as a board member. She still helps the Chamber of Commerce quite a bit. And she's on, she's been on the Education Foundation Board. She's on the Arts Council. She, we're fortunate to have her on the Beutification Council. She is on the Library Board. She's past president. And then she's a volunteer computer class teacher. She is part of Habitat for Humanity Board where she has served on the Home Selection Committee. And she talks, she's active with her church, the New Hope Baptist Church, where she assists in teaching Sunday School and has taught a sewing class and a craft class for seniors. I do have to say that my parents still make fun of the shorts I made. And I'm from home ec. class in eighth grade, but I tried. She is also the go-to person for any kind of preparation for any meetings, any, anything that needs to happen. And I think that we all call on her with all the different organizations for help with that. She's a graduate of the Tuskegee Institute. And she's an active member of the Talladega Family Tuskegee Club for over four years. And she served as president for ten-plus years. And she currently serves as the Alumni Fund Coordinator. And she organizes Christmas toys for foster children and gifts for nursing home patients. And I'm quite sure there's more that I could tell you, but it is my honor to give this award to Ms. Janice Adams.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Janice. The app to Silicaga Beutification Council twenty twenty three Nan Anon Lane Citizen of the Year Award.
Okay.
Ms. Janice Adams. Silicaga Beutification Council proudly recognizes individuals who perform outstanding service to the city and the community through unselfish leadership deeds and giving to enhance our quality of life. Barry Morse, President.
Thank you. Thank you. No speech. I appreciate the wonderful shape of the kids.
Dan, do you want to talk to her, or do you have to hand?
No.
I just been married, receive my permission, right? Be quiet and sit.
Now, our next award is the Shining Star Award. And this award is presented in memory of Ms. Frances Kahn. It's given to a citizen that exemplifies an enthusiastic, positive attitude about keeping Silicaga clean and beautiful. This award signifies civic pride and dedication to the promotion of this community. And our recipient this year actually grew up here in Silicaga and graduated from Auburn University with a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. And after he graduated, he and his wife Rosa, I think he's figured out who he is by now, pursued travel nursing opportunities in different parts of the country. But he felt a strong connection to his hometown and chose to return. Since twenty twenty two, he and Rosa have been actively engaged in community events in Silicaga. When he's not fulfilling his role as an ICU nurse at Cusa Valley Medical Center, he enjoys playing pickleball with Silicaga Pickleball Club. And that's why you're not playing tonight, Brent. And he's one of the founding members of the Silicaga Pickleball Club. He dedicates his free time to volunteering at events organized by the Beutification Council. And he walks dogs at the Silicaga Animal Shelter. He's known for his readiness to assist those in need. And he's deeply passionate about Silicaga's growth. He's a beacon of positivity and community spirit, inspiring others to join him in shaping a bright future for Silicaga. So, Mr. Brent Butts, you are our Shining Star.
Great, congratulations. Silicaga Beutification Council twenty twenty three Shining Star Award presented to Brent Butts in memory of Ms. Frances W. Kahn. Frances Kahn was a charter member of the Silicaga Beutification Council. She was dedicated and involved in the promotions and beautification of Silicaga. As Kahn exhibited, an outstanding commitment and gave civic pride to everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we've got one last award. This is the Mary Jo Brown Award. Now, the Mary Jo Brown Award is for a Silicaga Beutification Council member that proudly recognizes individuals who perform outstanding service to the city and community through unselfish leadership deeds. I'm reading the Citizen of the Year Award, excuse me. This is the wrong award. Ignore all of that. This is the Mary Jo Brown Award we're doing. This award is given to individuals for outstanding and dedicated service to the Beutification Council and the community in general. And our recipient of this award, he devotes his time and resources to keeping Silicaga and the surrounding community a great place to work, live, and visit. He is the first to volunteer for any Beutification Council litter pickup event. He was present with us from the very beginning. We cleaned up the Silicaga Cemetery, the Storick Cemetery on Port Williams. And he was there from day one and helped drag limbs all across the world up there. We need and do all kinds of things through town. He brings new ideas to each Beutification Council meeting. And he was the founder of the Facebook page Things Going On in Silicaga. And he did that approximately five years ago and now has twenty-eight thousand members on that page. And he doesn't allow any negativity toward the city, toward the business, or any citizen. And he's very much dedicated to this community. And he's probably mad at me right now, but this award goes to Mr. Paul Stepp.
Congratulations. Silicaga Beutification Council, Silicaga Beutification Council Corporation proudly presents the twenty twenty three Mary Jo Brown Award to Paul Stepp in appreciation of outstanding and devoted service to the city of Silicaga. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just one more thing to bring your attention to. On the thirteenth of this month, just last Wednesday, the pre-construction conference was completed on the Long Island Road Bridge, which is south on twenty-one, just past the ports. Construction will begin after the first year. City utilities will be out there. It's going to be a rather dangerous area because it's a two-way road. You have to watch the flagman if the flag is there. But this bridge has to be, this project's been on the board of not over three years, I know of. But it's going to happen next year. And we just want to caution everybody who lives in this area. Walnut Road is a rap road. It goes all the way from right side of twenty-one back to the right side of twenty-one farther down the road. But that's one area will be closed. But for the residents of that area, they'd be notified of the age of the issues in that area. And also, last but not least, I would like to everybody to sing a song with me. The song is Happy Birthday to Lee Perry.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Lee. Happy birthday to you.
How about that?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I need a motion to add on the agenda.
Motion, motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve minutes of the regular work session held November twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ashton Fowler.
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve minutes of the regular city council meeting held November twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Ashton Fowler, first. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Need a motion to approve minutes of the regular work session held December fifth, twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Tiffany Nick. Second.
Second.
Lee Perryman. All in favor?
Yea.
Need a motion to approve minutes of the regular city council meeting held December fifth, twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Need a motion to approve minutes of the special call of city council meeting held December eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Old business items, action that is necessary to appoint a board of education member to the five-year term expired in April of twenty twenty three. Term expired for Melissa Garris. I'm going to open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Olin Twiman.
Olin Twiman. Anybody else?
I will be recusing myself from this vote due to informing.
Will you read that into the minutes?
I just did.
Clear.
It'll be in the meeting minutes, yes.
Okay. Hearing no other nominations, I'm going to close nominations.
Make a motion to close nominations.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Floor is now closed. Now, we will proceed to vote on the nominations. And we're going to do a roll call vote. Those in favor of Olin Twiman, Ashton Fowler.
Yea.
Tiffany Nick.
Yes.
Nate recused himself. Lee Perryman.
Yea.
Laura EPA. I now need a motion to appoint Olin Twiman to the five-year expired term of Melissa Garris.
Motion.
Oh, Tiffany Nick. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? We'll need to do another roll call vote. So Ashton Fowler.
Yea.
Tiffany Nick.
Yes.
Nate recused himself. Lee Perryman.
Yea.
And Laura EPA. Wendy Twi- or Olin Twiman is now appointed to serve that five-year term ending June twenty twenty eight for the school board. New Business.
And just say thanks to Ms. Garris for hanging in there and going above and beyond her appointment.
I appreciate her continuing to serve even after her appointment expired. Now, with New Business, we have a public hearing to consider annexation and zoning of property located at twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue, Zoned MX two. If anybody would like to speak, you're limited to five minutes each. Anybody here on behalf of that? I will now close the public hearing. I need a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty-two sixty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll introduce.
Now, I need a motion for, oh, city clerk treasurer to read the ordinance into the minutes.
Ordinance number twenty-two sixty-three dash twenty-three. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, as follows. Section one, assent, the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, assents to the annexation to the city of Silicaga of the property hereinafter described. Section two, annexation. Pursuant to petition filed with the city clerk of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, in accordance with Act number twenty-two twenty-eight of the nineteen seventy-one regular session of the legislature of the state of Alabama, the following described property is hereby annexed to the city of Silicaga, Alabama, and made a part of the municipal limits of the city of Silicaga. Parcel one. Carmelo Salinas and Celia Yanis Hernandez, twenty-three Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Tuscaloosa Avenue, Silicaga, one hundred by eighty-eight Avondale Mills of Silicaga, section E, Lot three, Block twenty-two of section nineteen, T twenty-one, R four. This property is known as twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue, Silicaga. Parcel ID number twenty-seven dash zero four dash nineteen dash four dash zero 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 dash one oh three point zero zero zero. At the recommendation of the Planning Commission, the property is hereby Zoned MX two, Limited Mixed Use District, at the time of annexation into the city limits of Silicaga. Section three, filing. The city clerk of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, is directed to file a description of this annexed property in the office of the Judge of Probate of Talladega County, Alabama. Section four, date of effect. The annexation and zoning of the above properties shall be effectively immediately after its passage and publication as required by law. Section five. Police jurisdiction. In addition, the police jurisdiction of the city of Silicaga is hereby extended as provided by law with the addition of the above-described expansion of the corporate limits of the city of Silicaga. And the boundaries of the police jurisdiction shall expand to the distance provided by law to reflect the newly annexed territory. Adopted this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three, Laura Barlow Heath, City Council President. Action by Mayor, approved this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. James Heil, Mayor. Attest Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer. Certification. State of Alabama, Talladega County. I, Alexandra Lambert, the duly-appointed qualified city clerk treasurer of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, do hereby certify that the above document is true and correct of the ordinance number twenty-two sixty-three dash twenty-three as adopted by the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, at its regular meeting held on nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. The original of said document is on file and of record in my office in the Silicaga Municipal Complex in the city of Silicaga, Alabama. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand an official seal of the city of Alabama, the city of Silicaga, Alabama, on this, the nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer, City of Silicaga, Alabama. Certification of publication. I, Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer of the city of Silicaga, hereby certify that the above ordinance was duly adopted by the city council of the city of Silicaga at a regular meeting held on the nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three, and that the same has been published in accordance with the law in the Daily Home Newspaper. Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer, City of Silicaga.
Thank you, Alex. Now, I need a motion for annexation and zoning change of property twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue.
Need a motion to suspend the rule.
I need a motion to suspend the rules, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Now, I need a motion to ma- for, to map out for annexation zoning change of property twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Need a roll call vote. Ashton Fowler.
Yea.
Tiffany Nick.
Yes.
Nate Brewer.
Yea.
Lee Perryman.
Yea.
Laura. All in favor? Now, moving on to item number fourteen. Action that is necessary to approve resolution eighty-one twenty-three to set public hearing to permanently close the road identified as Skyview Drive. City Clerk Treasurer to read resolution eighty-one twenty twenty three into the meeting minutes.
Resolution eighty-one dash twenty twenty three. Authorizing the publication of notice of public hearing relating to the permanent road closure of Skyview Drive in the city limits of Silicaga, Alabama. Whereas the city council of the city of Silicaga has been petitioned to permanently close the road, Skyview Drive, and whereas all properties on both sides of Skyview Drive are owned by Brian South, and whereas the Silicaga Planning Commission has heard the request of the petitioner and has recommended that this road be closed permanently. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama. The city shall hold a public hearing at six o'clock P M. On Thursday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of considering the permanent road closure by the Planning Commission. The city shall cause public notice of this hearing to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Silicaga one time as required by law. The city, the city, shall post a copy of the proposed resolution on the bulletin board next to the city clerk treasurer's office at three oh one North Broadway Avenue in Silicaga. Adopted and approved this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three, city of Silicaga, a municipal corporation, Laura Barlow Heath, City Council President, James Mayor Heil, James Heil, Mayor, sorry, Mayor, attest Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer. Certification, State of Alabama, Talladega County. I, Alexandra Lambert, the duly-appointed qualified and acting clerk of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, do hereby certify that the attached document is a true and exact copy of resolution number eighty-one twenty twenty three as adopted and approved by the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, at its regular meeting held on the nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three, and that the original of said document is on file and of record in my office in the Silicaga Municipal Complex in the city of Silicaga, Alabama. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the official seal of the city of Silicaga, Alabama, on this, the nineteenth day, bless you, of twenty December, twenty twenty three. Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer, City of Silicaga, Alabama.
Now, I need a motion to approve resolution eighty-one twenty twenty three to set public hearing to permanently close the road identified at Skyview Drive.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Action that is necessary to reallocate unexpended funds in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred one dollars and seventy-one cents from FY twenty thirty bond proceeds for Silicaga Parks and Rec to upgrade South Highland Park. Funding previously approved by city council at the May sixteenth, twenty twenty three council meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ashton Fowler. All, and do we need to do a roll call vote?
No.
Okay. All in favor, yeah. All in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to the action that is necessary to approve resolution eighty-two twenty twenty three to reallocate thirteen thousand seven hundred one dollars and seventy-one cents from FY twenty-four bond proceeds for Silicaga Parks and Recreation to upgrade South Highland Park. City Clerk Treasurer to read resolution number eighty-two twenty twenty three into the meeting minutes.
And Alex, I think you can eliminate the template stuff, just the essence of the.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Perryman. Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty twenty three. Reallocation of bond proceeds funds for South Highland Park upgrades. Whereas at the May sixteenth, twenty twenty three, city council meeting, the city council approved funding in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred one dollars and seventy-one cents from the bond proceeds fund for South Highland Park upgrades and whereas the South Highland Park upgrades are about to commence and there are unexpended funds remaining in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred one dollars and seventy-one cents from the allocated bond proceeds funding and from the allocated bond proceeds funding, and whereas it is deemed necessary to allocate the unexpected, unexpended funds in the FY24 budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Silicaga, Alabama. Section 1. The city council approves the reallocation of unexpected funds in the amount of $13,701.71 from bond proceeds fund for upgrades to South Highland Park upgrades in the fiscal year 24 budget. Section 2. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you, Alex. Um, thank you, Alex. I need a motion to approve Resolution 822023.
Motion.
Tiffany Nix, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Action that is necessary to approve the FY24 restructure pay plan for retention and improvement purposes. City clerk to read overall total information caused in funding sources into the meeting minutes.
The total implementation cost for the first full pay period in January to September 30th, 2023 will be-
2024.
2024. Will be $758,000- We will be taking $100,000 from the street department. The police department from their earmarked funds will be $99,893.78. The fire department's allocated earmarked funds will be $336,621.30. The remaining balance of $221,616.2 will come from unused salaries.
I now need a motion to approve the FY24 restructure pay plan for retention or improvement purposes.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Action that is necessary to appoint John Parrish, the only applicant, to vacated six-year term for the industrial development board set to expire April 2029. This will be the replacement for late Judge Barry Bond. Need a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Action that is necessary to approve request recommendation from Human Resource Specialist Jane McGee to sell unused vacation leave resulting from departmental staffing shortages to be carried forward to 2024. City clerk treasurer to read each individual department's request into the meeting minutes.
That's correct. Let me just walk down and get it. The animal shelter, Stephanie Engel, up to 40 hours vacation hours.
No names, no names.
Animal shelter, up to 25 vacation hours for an employee. Animal shelter, up to 40 hours vacation for an employee. In the court, an employee, 104 vacation hours. The court, up to 141.5 hours. E&amp;L, up to 28 vacation hours. E&amp;L, up to four hours for an employee. The fire department, up to 40 vacation hours for an employee. The fire department, up to 56 vacation hours. Fire department, up to 64 vacation hours. Fire department, up to 104 vacation hours. Fire department, up to 82.5 vacation hours.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Action that is necessary to approve 050 retail beer, all premises only, and 070 retail table one, all premises only, application from-
Skip 20.
That was removed from during the work session.
Application from Stephen Grant Sutherland, Chief Executive Officer of Dahlgen Corp. LLC, and Emily Christine Taylor LLC, Manager of Dahlgen Corp. LLC, located at 1430 Talladega Highway in Silicaga. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Action that is necessary to approve FY23 accounts payable invoices in the amount of $48,628.58. I need a motion?
Motion.
Ashton Fowler first, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Action that is necessary to approve FY24 accounts payable invoices in the amount of $285,756.28.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve November payroll in the amount of $466,393.11.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Time now for anyone to address the city council. No action to be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone, state your name, address, for record, or to address in the council. All right, having no further-
I've, I've got something I need to say. Um, about the pay plan, I know the perception is wanting to be that taxes was raised, appropriations were abused, and employees are getting pay raises. However, all that may be true, but we revisited a 15-year pay plan that needed to be redone. We're going to review the appropriations in April as we have discussed and try to give back what was taken from those entities, and we're still planning on doing our pool in community center. As, that's what Nate plans on doing. I can't speak for anyone else. I'm sure that's what it is across the board, but I just wanted to get that out there because I know the way tonight looks, the way things were rushed, you gotta do, gotta do, and it was well, it, it was done right, HR. I thank you and I thank the city clerk's office. It, it may not be the best plan, but the plan we come up with, and I'm glad y'all got the numbers together in a short period of time.
Thank you, Nate, for your opinion. Um, having no further business to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Yea.
Time of adjournment, 6:38.